All right.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session, and today we're gonna be looking at final table strategy. Let's get started.
Rage this, what's that eighteen picks? Okay, it's folded to the button, is that correct?
Yeah. No, no, I guess you're right.
Oh, I, oh, yeah, I missed that.
Eighteen in the mid. So we should go all in on top of him.
Yeah, no, he went, he went to two and there's eighteen behind.
Ah, yeah. This one, early position open. There's not really a short stack, so we can't really pressure him. It's probably a fine three bet.
We are the daddy. Get out the belt for this kid.
Need to punish him, you think?
Absolutely.
Okay, maybe. Yeah. Makes sense. A six and a seven more than a five and a four. Oh, we picked up the doors.
When you start to get deep stacked, like the, the deeper you get, the more wants to three bet the suited varieties there.
Yeah.
Same as Chip V.
And so here is daddy, this is gonna be a low frequency three bet, high frequency call.
You three bet ten eight offsuit here, Pete.
Yeah, against the cutoff, remember at forty, we're gonna be looking at the king eight, king nine, uh, range, and so it's gonna extrapolate that into the jacks and tens as well.
Okay, makes sense.
Low frequency raise, high frequency call.
You got me, Pete.
Oh, jacket doesn't, queen eight doesn't.
One pip under.
Yeah.
But it's the good area, right? It's really close.
The important thing is to be able to find three bets in this spot, which a week ago I never would have found.
Hold. Yeah, ten big blind stat next big blind.
What, what do we call with?
Uh. King, queen.
Ace ten suited.
Yeah. You guys folding king, jack suited.
Yeah, easy fold with a short stick.
Oh, yeah, with ICM pressure, we're tied for third.
East ten suited ace jack off.
What about king, jack offsuit? King, jack suited, I mean.
Fold.
Um, just.
King, queen suited.
King, queen suited, I'm calling.
I think our playing range is probably seven percent.
I'm calling with king, jack, and I, I don't know what to do with this one. So if I don't know what to do, it's probably better for me to fold, but I'm definitely running king, jack suited.
Oh, no, holding for sure.
I knew it was close. I knew it was exactly that, actually, that we needed to rumble, but it's probably zero, right? Well, king, jack. Well, sure, king, jack.
I think we squeeze suit, the suited portion of our range, I think this wants to squeeze.
Against suited, you open up. That's what I'm thinking about squeezing, but I think I, in game, I probably call.
I actually think ace, jack, off.
Because it's suited.
I think ace, jack, falls off, and I think ace, jack, suited wants to squeeze.
Think about the nature of our hand. When we have a jack in our hand and we're against early position, we block the jack ten suited, the king, jacks suited, all the kind of ace, jacks suited, all the bottom of his range, basically.
Not the bottom, jacks aren't the bottom of his range. He has nine X in range, ten X in range, some eight X in range.
No, not in offsuit.
Nah.
So at ICM.
You wanna, you wanna unblock the offsuit, you wanna unblock the offsuit side of his bottom.
So usually, at ICM, having a jack or a ten in your hand is really bad against early position, and having a nine or an eight in your hand is really bad against late position. So my guess is here that we mostly just call because of the jack. Let's see.
Yeah.
Plays well, post-flop, and we want to get in the worst stuff.
Wow, wants to fold.
Yeah, because we have a jack in our hand, and we're blocking the bottom of his opening range and the bottom of his calling range as well. So it's always like that, that ICM. Early position, jack or ten in our hand is bad. Really bad, even pocket tens, not folds. So jacks and tens against CP, bad.
Wait, can you, uh, shit.
Well, if you, if you do squeeze.
Please show, excuse me, sorry, uh, show the opening range, because in my opinion, opening ranges are a lot tighter with ICM. Just in, um.
Sure, it's a lot tighter, but he's still gonna open jack ten suited, right? He's still gonna open queen, jack suited, right? He's still gonna open king, jack suited, right?
But, but it's already one pip tighter.
Yeah, but he's, you know, he's still opening the suited jacks.
Yeah.
So when you have a jack in your hands, more likely he has like ace, king, or king, queen, or aces, or kings. Because you block all the, 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 the bottom of his range.
Absolutely.
Here, forty big blinds. There's a short stack. He's opening wide. We'll have a great hand, I'm gonna do that.
Big stack behind us, but I guess I still wanna raise folds.
Never, this is a big mistake. I thought I was gonna put pressure because there's a short stack here, so we can't do anything.
I think the problem is there's a.
You spotted, I think you spotted, yeah, I disrespect.
Also, but also you're pressuring yourself, you know, cuz like, you, uh, you get into a big hand and now all of a sudden you're the one busting.
We need like king, queen. Or the suited version, more equity.
At the final table, you just don't get to raise daddy's big blind very much.
Equal stacks, we're shoving.
I was gonna call.
No, Jim.
My guess is that all the suited kings are shoving here.
It's a sham here.
Ooh, spicy, maybe not all of them.
Not quite. All the suited aces.
So see, having a nine or an eight here is really bad against late position.
We like to, uh, show off the suited aces in ICM and the offsuit aces in normal ICM.
Yeah.
Twenty bigs?
Exactly.
Ah, okay.
I'm folding.
I'm folding here, is this a mistake?
I don't know.
I think so, but.
Maybe, maybe.
I would limp.
Raise. I think it just razor fold.
I would raise ten, seven, ten, eight, jack, seven.
Ten, seven is the one, I think. No, it isn't.
Oh, okay, it's mixing, you can do whatever you want.
I feel like it, once, when there's a few people left at the final table, you don't do much open, I mean, there's, I'm looking at the range, but there is more open limping than I would have thought. I didn't think there was a lot of open limping, eh, in ICM spots from the small blind.
I actually kind of view it as the opposite, I think there's, I, I expect a little bit more there.
Yeah, cuz you wanna keep, you wanna keep some more pots smaller.
What the hell happened? Who the hell three bets ten deuce?
You did.
Who did that? Who, what?
I mean, it's blind, blind on blind violence.
Ten deuce? Wendy.
You gotta get in there, man, you gotta balance your range.
Ten deuce. Violence, you chose violence, gee.
Violence chose you. Galen, are you just joining us for that? Ten deuce, uh, four bet?
I saw, I saw the spicy, I saw spicy.
Bold.
EP, we fold?
I am.
That's the worst queen you defend here.
You might be able to. It's because you're like, shit, well, you're not chip leader.
Queen, mine, eh?
And I mean, I'm, I'm folding this, but.
That makes it very tight, right?
Not necessarily, because you're, you're kinda deep, right? You're forty effective almost.
What do you say, queen, eight?
I'm queen, eh.
Queen, eight, I think is definitely solid defend here. See, I think you're, you're pretty wide still. Just because you're deep.
So the five and six X are outliers, queen, seven is a pure fold, it gets in there with queen, six and queen, five some, for, I guess, wheel cores or some shit.
Well, so like, you know what, you know why it's doing that, right, Ken?
No, I just asked.
Well, like, what, like, let's look at his opening range, how does the seven interact with his opening range?
I don't think he has many sevens in his, uh, opening range.
Eight, seven, king, seven, and pocket seven, that's enough.
So it's not a ton, but cuz like, we see like, okay, he's got equal frequencies of six X.
Right, and we're full playing them a hundred percent.
Right, so that's, that can't be it, right?
I think it's the wheel core effect. You can, you can make a wheel with the five and core, a wheel with the six. Is what I think it is.
Yeah, it's interesting, I thought it just would have interacted with some portion of the range that we didn't really want to, but that's not really the case. Oh. So it's gonna tell you probably to do some crazy stuff here sometimes, but I kinda like folding.
I'm folding.
I, I, I like raising here because there's a short stack here.
A squeeze, but Louis, you keep trying to pressure other people when you yourself are suffering ICM from there being a short stack.
So, yeah, I mean, and that's honestly, like, when risk premiums are high, which they are very high here, they are a high here for everyone involved, that's when you start seeing some of these like polar out of line combos getting in there. Like, I wouldn't be surprised, maybe it's the king Xs that go crazy here, but.
Full frequency, this is.
See, like, look at, look at the, look at the king Xs and stuff, but like, I would also take this with a heavy grain of salt. Just because, you know, it really depends on what these guys are opening and flating with.
Yeah, and how, how much they defend versus raises.
But like, I mean.
Appreciate the squeezing, uh, squeezing sounds here.
These are, uh, these are attractive combos, right? This is where you're pulling your bluffs from.
Yeah.
Okay, it is interesting too, it, that range is hyper polar, it's just incredibly polar.
How much, how much do we need to squeeze there with ace three suited? How big, I mean?
Well, it's very contextual, Maxie, it depends, um, I would, I think you'd probably squeeze the typical size, right? Like, I don't know, make.
Seven, seven and a half?
You can size down on a final table by a half blind, a very, a whole big blind, yeah.
Dude, I actually wanna fold this.
I kinda wanna call ten seven, though, we just flopped so well.
Really, ten, seven, trash, man, your ten big blinds.
About ten eight or ten nine.
Like, we hit a pair and we go with it, we just have so much, we have so much equity in this hand.
Oh.
Nope, the ten eight gets in there. The three gappers too much.
Do you not call here?
No, I said fold.
Dude, I'm calling every time, every time, every time.
I said fold, and I speculated ten eight might get in there.
There is, I'm way too loose here.
If you have thirty bigs here, we defend wider, is that correct?
Thirty, I'm pretty sure, pretty sure that's right.
Ricky. Louis, just click fold.
I like to.
Probably, why is it fold?
Galen, Galen, we're winning, slowly but surely, we are winning.
We are, he's making progress, I'm proud of him.
All right, Louis, so this spot, I like this one really first piece, cuz we, uh, we covered these two guys, so we actually can put pressure on them.
Yeah, I like a squeeze, yeah, you don't really have a flat range here, like, look, there's not really a flat range here.
No.
You don't get to raise into daddy's big blind.
Exactly, yeah, teach, teach him, teach him a lesson.
Now, what do we do when we get cold four bet by one of the big stacks?
You guys folding these?
Fold, are you crazy? You fold.
I mean, it's pretty attractive hand.
No, it's not, not when you get cold four bet.
I need more pocket ten folding here, I need more queen, jack suited, queen ten suited.
Well, so like, Louis, what are you planning to do with those hands? Are you wanting just to overcall? Is that what you're wanting to do?
My plan is to call and make the flush.
My plan is to flop quads.
Or a full house.
Dude, if they, if they wanna choose violence, man, and let them play a pot, like, you got sixty four bigs, just, just get some popcorn, you're good to go, bro.
Keep them in with the worst kings.
So.
This is a popcorn hand, this is one.
I think this, yeah, I was gonna say, we're equal stacks here, like, risk premiums are gonna be moderately high here, um, I like folding cuz we're too short to really like generate a bunch of fold equity, right?
Yeah, we gotta get that popcorn.
Oh, I don't know.
No, I would, I would have shoved it.
Well, if you shove your suited aces there, I mean.
I mean, it's not the worst thing, like, okay, like, if they're appropriately adjusted and balanced, have a blast. Now, if you got some questions about it, just, you know, get some popcorn, you're good to go, man.
All right, so, LP, are you more inclined to take the spot where you get to bluff the wheel aces not all in than you are the higher variance all in shove?
I'd rather make a three bet small when I'm deeper.
Mm-hmm. So you like to, you like to screw around with that portion of the range, deeper, but not so much looking to jam it when you have a small stack?
Because I've been hurt, Ken.
I'm just trying to break, I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out.
So let's see, I've been like shoving, and then they're supposed to fold like ace ten off, ace jack off, and they just don't.
Sounds, uh, sounds like you're opening old wounds, Ken, is what you're trying to do, but a man's been hurt.
Just almost way back. How you tear, tear down the wound again.
This is a hard spot right here.
I think you call this.
I think this is a call.
I don't know.
Fault.
I'm kinda. We're almost second place in our pocket. I'm kinda, I'm kinda sick here.
What's your reason?
Jacks, jacks, tens. I wanna, I, I kinda wanna call, but I don't really wanna call.
I think you call, it's just because it's the button, the button's too wide, like, if it was cut off, I think you might start mixing in some folds, it'll just be closer, but.
What about having an eight in your hand and being against late position?
Yeah, man, it's not great, you're right, like, it's not great. It's just, he's so incentivized to jam so much.
Not great.
His range is.
He jams every.
All, all their stacks are equal.
Also, cuz he's, he's, he's also big stack on the button, and you got the, you got the ten bigs right here in low jack, he's, he can play wider against the blinds here to get y'all to fold out.
That's what, that's what he's, that, that's what he's doing, but we cannot do nothing with this, we just need to fold.
I would call with sevens before eights.
I would call with tens.
Because sevens is the same value, right? But they don't block the bottoms. They don't block ace eight, they don't block, eh,
They don't block.
Thing, uh, king, aces.
Ace eight and ace eight, ace eight offsuit, they say suited.
I would call with ten bigs with sevens.
I ask a question?
Yeah.
Please.
So everyone's saying like he's jamming wide or blah, 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 but I wanna know specifically, is he jamming worse pairs, sevens, fives, fours?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So if he's jamming those, don't we have to call?
I, but they're. We called with sevens, maybe, we called with sixes, maybe.
In chippy V.
Hey, about this.
Ken.
I'm talking about ICM here.
Uh, it's not chippy V, we know, we know, we know it's chippy V, we know it's chippy V, he's jamming everything in chippy V.
I'm asking, I see him, if he's jamming, I see him, if he's jamming twos through sevens here, I think we have to call, I don't know.
What do you think the percentage of his range he's jamming here is? If you had to guess?
Fifteen.
It's gonna be a lot of blockers, eight, nine, ten, high blockers.
Dude, he's gonna be jamming, he's gonna be jamming thirty percent, I think, thirty percent.
Thirty too much, that's too much.
Then we gotta call.
The thing is, is he has a, he has a raise, a min raise range as well.
So thirty-two percent.
I told you. So fold.
Tens.
No, yes, sliver of calls.
But he is, he is jamming thirty percent of the time, Galen is right, he's jamming a lot, even if he's jamming a lot, there's nothing.
Dude, it's still miserable, right? It's still like very marginal.
It's gonna be the case whenever we're against late position, I can, I'll say it until we get it. Eights are not good against the late position.
Maybe it's because also, maybe it's because of the equal stacks all over the table, the twenty bigs.
He, he won't shove aces and kings there, he probably calls or raised them, so they are out of the question normally.
Uh, let it go?
You sure about that?
Wait, you're not, I'm not. You're the call, you're the big stack against a small stack low jack.
Okay, pasa?
Might be a recall.
Close.
Thing is, say we call and we lose, we'll still tied for second.
Yeah, I just.
It's a marginal calling spot.
I'm kinda with Ken.
It's, it's better to lose our chips by raising.
Okay, so tell you what, guys, this is the bottom of my calling range, so now what I'm trying to do is, when I know this is a call, and this is the bottom of my calling range, I'm gonna fold.
I think that's a good, good idea, and like Ken said, boom, there it is, there it is. So it's like, it's razor thin, razor thin, ace, tens in there, ace, tens, tuted, it's in there.
Yeah.
Good intuitions, uh, you probably raise here.
Because of this?
Yeah, I would just be raising wide here, I think.
This is bad, though.
Almost, almost.
It's basically, like, you could look at a chippy V range, and that's probably a.
That, that range was actually like one pip wider than the standard button open range.
Exactly.
It was seven, four instead of eight, five.
Cool.
Yes, I think we can, I think we can fold this, we're fourth.
Yeah, I'm, uh, I was gonna say, I'm with, um, I kinda wanna fold.
I'd say.
Yeah, whatever. Possibly.
Two point three X, huh?
Thirty bigs we have, I think it's a call.
Yeah. Okay.
Well.
Oh.
Yeah.
Are we raising our suited aces here? Yeah, squeezing, yeah. Fold, too sh, too shallow to squeeze? Fold?
Yeah, and.
It's gonna be fifty, fifty, mixing. You can go all in here, it's fine.
Well, it's also.
It's open and a, and a, and a call, huh? It's not just.
It's also, it's also the two small stacks going at it. You can get like a free bust out from this, just folded.
Yeah, but it's still the same, right? Mixing.
Wait, 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 Louis, uh, one interesting point I've learned, um, you can see ace ten suited, ace nine suited are folds, and all the bottom aces are gems, because we unblock the folding range from logic.
Yeah, for sure.
So, um, ace five, uh, ace four suited, this is a good jam here.
I don't know who's talking, but they're making a lot of sense.
It's Dominic.
That was Dominic.
I think Dominic knows what he's talking about there.
Not really, I agree, just right.
Fold.
Dominic is, how do we win twenty?
I don't know, we don't have a ton of ICM pressure on us, it kinda feels like a jam, but it might be just too wide.
Why do you mean we don't have ICM pressure?
I think this is a, this is a fold.
We don't have a ton, we're, we're in last.
It's a squeeze, though, it's a squeeze, like, you see, it's an open and a call.
Great, a jack, it's, it's kind of early positions, I'm, uh.
Yeah.
I think you wanna lean on the suited stuff.
Like, look at the, look at ace queen, like, ace queen's even kinda like, I don't like this spot.
Yeah, easy fold. Easy game.
You can maybe defend this, no, 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 small blind, small blind's in there.
Right, that's why I'm folding.
Yeah.
So what do we do with ten five suited here?
I'm just letting them do battle, I'm out.
Yeah, man, it's a suited one gapper, like, it might actually defend, like, I feel like this is a close combo, but I, I kinda just.
Eight, nine, suited, eight, ten, suited.
What about ten, six?
Nope.
Nope.
Dude, I like eight, it's better than.
To, to me, ten, six is even worse. Surged connectors only, only connectors.
I'm not calling ten, seven.
My poor ear.
Ten eight.
No.
I'm calling ten eight for sure, I'm calling eleven as well. Oh, my goodness, what am I?
Great. Not even close. Oh.
Just let them battle, man.
I'm just folding that.
Indeed, just let them battles, the big stack opening into two short stack, I guess that's the takeaway.
Well, yeah, short stack called is, I think, the big thing there, the short stack's like, I got a hand, I'm glad to tip.
Yeah, and he's, he's in there, so let sit out and let him bust.
His calling range is one tenth of a percent. It's like a red flag, when you flat share, it's like, get out.
What is she calling with there?
Aces?
Probably call here or raise, it's not a call, obviously, I would just jam, I think.
You wanna call, huh?
Just push to go, but.
Try again.
Better luck next time.
I'm gonna raise to keep his range a little wider in case he wants to get spicy and have some bluff, put pressure on me. So I'd rather raise all in.
I would just rip it here.
We have six, six blinds.
I would call it.
Kind of inclined.
It's too strong to rip.
I know, I, I think it's the, the top of the range.
I don't know.
I would call, raise six kings and aces and call, and then rip this one.
Okay, okay, Roger.
Yeah, I like that better, I like that better.
Okay, yeah, it's exactly that.
And then jacks wanna just raise, it's, ah, queens are weird.
Queens.
Well, uh, I think if, if jack's raising, that means they're raised holding.
Ooh, that's a good, that's an interesting proposition, I think you might call this.
Definitely.
Cool.
Well, he wants to mess around, well, we have king, seven.
Let's go.
Respect. Let's go.
Dude.
Oh, wow.
Roll fish.
Oh, I misheard my hand, I thought it was an ace, not a king.
Yay.
I thought we had two kings.
Ay, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Give him a, give him a little three bet, man.
Uh, it's a nine, can't go with a nine.
Can't go with a nine.
You're right, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Oh, my God, but we can call.
A good call.
Ooh, uh.
Uh, what are the other sizes?
There's a six big line stack.
Yeah, we're folding cuz they, cuz the logic.
That's close. It is close. Man, I might still find a call here, sometimes, depending on my mood.
You know what? I think ace nine offsuit is a mandatory call, but ace seven, probably not.
I think you're right, Louis, I think.
I'm tempted, honestly, I, I would flick the chips in depending on the opponent here. But I think ace nine, you never make a mistake, ace eight and ace seven are probably close, so I would fold.
Brazilian, you snap call.
What do you think is this, uh, min raising range to induce? What, what's the catch on the aces? What do you think he will min raise?
Uh, he's gonna like, I think he's gonna like, have like a limping range with suited aces, so if he's the, going all in, it's gonna be offsuit aces, some offsuit kings, pairs, stuff like that, think he has a min raising strategy here, and does that for sure. All the best tens he's been raising, kings, queens, ace king, stuff like that. So he's, he's probably more in the ace, jack off and lower area. So ace, jack, ace ten, ace nine, and all the offsuit aces.
I think some, I think some ace queens might, ace queen might be split.
I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's a call here, but I'll go.
What do you guys think, uh, we, we have to meet, uh, how much equity? Our, um, calling range has to versus SP, uh, all in range?
Hmm, I have no idea how to answer that question.
I don't think it's a relation to the equity in our range, I think it's more of a question of The value of our calling range versus the stacked end. So at nineteen here, if you add ICM a little bit, I think it says nine off suit.
Is he polar or linear?
I would, uh, he's super polar, okay?
Yeah, he's very polar.
But we can't, we can't do anything about it because of the six big blinds, we have to reset.
Yeah, that's what I want to say.
Yeah, our ICM is too high to.
Yeah, but the ICM just says, oh, we need more equity to make a call.
So we were a pip, we were a pip tight, a pip or two tight.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I call. You told me super polar, I'm in.
Yeah.
I still don't call before the six big blinds.
I'm pretty sure like if you stick to ace nine, though, you're not gonna make a big mistake because you really think you're gonna do that.
Exactly, yeah.
They might find a lot of these combos, but are they finding?
That's the question, if he's got, uh. They don't do students.
Good point.
They don't find it.
Well, it's close.
If he's, if he's Brazilian, I think we got a call.
I think if you go with ace nine here, you'll never make a mistake.
That sounds racist.
Yeah. It is, but. I don't think it's racist, it's just.
I'm offended.
Play, it's that group's style of play.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's another way of saying somebody's way too wide.
Not derogatory.
I'm kidding.
It's funny you say that, Ken, but because very often I get on the final table and I look at the last fifteen players and ten are Brazilians.
Yeah.
You can say that all you want, these guys are crushing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
They ain't missing shit. We're over folding, they're doing that, and we're slap folding hands, you gotta call.
Look at this, look at this.
What am I doing?
What? You're, 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 well, you, you're.
Genius.
It's fine, to be honest.
No, I never would have. With twelve big blinds, just raise.
Yeah.
That means you have to have a raised fold range here, too.
Yeah. But it's a factor of if.
Tell you what, this GTS stuff, a little poker game, a little poker game.
Oh. All right. Hmm, I think we're good for ICM, now I wanna take some time to review hands that you guys have played.
Can hit some hints.
So if you guys have hands that you you mark that you wanna see the answer, or gonna.
I got one, I got a fun one, I already, okay, good.
I'll start with one, cuz. I wasn't sure what to do at all, this one is blind versus blind in the one fifty. Um. So I have jack eight off suit. Uh, defend my big blind on the flop, he bets small.
Are we still in chip EV?
Uh, yes, but it's getting, it's like, probably like fifty percent of the field gone, approaching the bubble. Says level fifteen, late stage, kind of a big tournament. Guys are super rag, my table is not very good, as you guys see. So. Against the two big blind, you guys call this flop with this hand, I gotcha.
Uh, what happened now? We talked about this yesterday.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, so you, you called a raise, pre flop.
Limp.
Or it was a limp check, it was limp check. I told you what I thought, I kinda like raising him on the flop, but because he went a little bit larger, I think calling may be a little bit better. Like, if it was a one big blind bet, I wanna raise, but this maybe call.
I'm calling, I will never fold, I will always call.
All right, well, let's see.
Let's take it to the streets. Let's see the, let's get the theory streets out.
Do we need to backdoor straight again for the raise? What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I I think blind versus blind, having just some interaction with that kinda stuff is. Why I would be pulling combos from there.
Okay, so pre flop, check back, it's fine. Queen of clubs. Nine of diamonds. Six of spade. He goes for the two big blind into three, oh, what about this nine? Kind of color is this? So bet. What size is this?
One point, one point six five.
How can you tell?
Oh.
I think it only has one size here.
There's four, one, two, three, four, five.
It only has one size. But it's.
The pot's too small, there's no different sizing. The pot's too small.
What size is a pick?
I think it probably goes small.
Do you have something filtered in?
Not that I know of.
It's a pretty, it's pretty weird, right? Like, what does that mean?
There's a, all raised together.
Yeah, all raised together.
There must be a filter. Oh, there we go.
There we go, now we got some, we got some texture.
Very, so it's betting one. Or three point, three and a half, and then.
Yeah, but your opponent bet one point six five in game.
Yeah, we're gonna see what we can, we'll, we'll look at both, I'm sure.
So one, jack eight, pure call. Not really.
There's a little stuff going, but it's not really raising, right? Like, it's not a big thing, not a big part of the strategy.
King of clubs on the turn. Check, check, uh, bet two again, call.
Think you gotta call again.
Now he bets two. Jack eight. Calling or raising? And if you have the clubs.
Yeah, your equity improved.
If you have the clubs, you can play about.
Yeah, it's drawn the line at the club, right?
Yeah.
Which is counterintuitive to me, cuz I think that would be blocking bluffs.
Well, I think it's kinda setting you up for a bluff on the river if a club comes, is why it's picking that combo. Those combos.
So he checks.
So like.
Okay, 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 okay. See, I thought so, I thought that the bottom of my range would do some shenanigans like that. But I didn't think I would be here with worse jacks, really. That called the flop. And called the turn.
So analyze his hand, though, like, is he playing that hand how he should be playing that hand according to what this thing says?
Well, you used the wrong side on the flop.
Yeah, no.
He had a queen, he had a queen, right?
Yeah, now let's see. Queen, eight, I was. Small or big? So it's kind of okay on the turn. Small or big, yeah, it's kind of in there, sticks in there, and then he, on the river, is supposed to block it. But he does not block it.
So if he's not constructing his range like this, it makes me wonder how it changes your strategy.
Yeah, for sure. But okay, I think I got lucky, though, because most jacks don't do it, right? But this one does.
Go back and see what Jack eight, what Jack eight does to the bet one, six, five.
Think we are gonna fold.
Probably let you off the hook, right? Now you just call.
You call. Still a gotcha.
That's right.
Yeah, and you wanna keep his range as wide as possible, you wanna keep him in with all those blocks, blind versus blind.
So it felt bad because he called, but the play is kind of okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, seems reasonable.
He's still in here with forty five of, uh, clubs that's trying to realize some equity.
So LP, you know why your jack two and jack three is in there is probably because we're a bit, bit better than having an eight. The eight blocks bluffs.
Possibly.
And it's gonna have a purer turn when it hits a two pair.
That one was a little spicy, you guys like to check raise on the flop from the big line on three.
I kinda do.
I prefer with a queen of clubs more often than a jack of clubs. But they're similar hands, so it's probably fine.
Yeah, splitting hairs a little bit, but.
Can we lead here? I mean, it's not gonna be a full check raise, that's just kinda how I don't overdo it.
How big did he bet? A three point one?
Alpha.
Yeah. So I was gonna say if it's a small bet, it's an easy call. Well, more likely a call if it's a small bet.
So you don't have much raising with a single high flush card for, uh, Joey?
Well, now, this is, this is a lower priority raise, I say.
If he, if he bet two, I think I'd probably just call this, two overs and a backdoor flush.
Okay. I like raising here.
Actually, you know what? Okay, so he bet three point one into five point nine, I feel like this becomes much less of a raise when he chooses that sizing as opposed to like a standard small bet.
All right.
Well, his range is probably gonna be mostly polarized there, right? He's gonna bet big a lot on that board, I think.
I, yeah, well, you know, like, he's gonna check here and he's gonna bet bigger a lot, I would think, you're right, Ken, just because of the nature of that board, but, um. I don't know, this is like, you're gonna have some check raising with a combo like this, I don't, I don't think.
I think it's gonna get in there some, but not like maybe twenty five, thirty percent.
Yeah, so like, look, you see the fragments in there, like, now if you gave him a small size, you'd probably see a, a more pronounced defend here. Yeah, okay, so it's like, you know, it's in there, so. It's not bad.
Simmers.
Oh, you got them.
You're, you're, you're playing with the margins of, uh, profitability here, though. Uh, what did you do here? Check, bet, raise, to drive a board, I kinda like just, uh, maybe calling the flop, especially if he's, well, that's a really small bet, never mind.
See, that's a really stupid mistake I made. Okay, because I check raise on the flop, he calls, I bet the turn, he calls, and on the river, I thought I was counterfeited.
Oh, I see the mistake you made here.
So I check because I think I'm counterfeited.
Oh, you let him off the hook, he's probably gonna call you sometimes.
I made a pretty big mistake here, that was funny.
Yeah, you, I I see what you did, you kind of panicked thinking like.
Oh, my God, what a bad river, now I lose to every king X, no.
That's so good, now it's like, now it's like every call, you're like, King deuce calls you, every king.
Honestly, LP, your mistake, I think you made a mistake on the turn, did you bet turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're supposed to check turn when you make a full house, run it.
You think it's a.
It's pretty fun.
I think when you check raise, make the absolute nuts on the turn, you check.
Okay.
Is this, is this button versus big blind, single raise pot?
Not AP versus button.
EP versus button, and he checked it.
Three, three bet pot.
Oh, it's three bet.
No, single, uh, yeah, no, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. Three bets.
No, dude, board.
I didn't realize it was a three bet pot.
Yeah, look at, look at the size of pot on the flop.
Yeah, that's, I, that's what, that was my knee jerk reaction, like, I I thought he was betting big on a, uh, of, a single raise pot, and I was like, why would you, why, why would you ever raise this? But that's, uh, that's not the case, right?
Yeah.
Is this, I mean.
This is just, this is just kind of a funny hand, to be honest.
Yeah.
Is this a theory?
A mistake.
So and I thought.
Theory call pre.
Oh, yeah, it definitely is a theory call pre, like.
Can we look at how you're supposed to play the turn? Oh, the turn, you pulled up on the turn, let's see how you're supposed to play the turn.
I think it's. Tim, we're over, we're over a hundred deep, man, you're definitely.
All right, all right, all right, I saw this forty big blinds and I got spooked, but that's forty big blinds that didn't go into pot, okay?
Yep, yep. Mm-hmm.
At forty, you could just fold this, right?
It's a little closer than, I think, um, you probably still defend, I think maybe sevens is gonna be the indifferent point, but plus or minus a pip, it's in that neighborhood.
But also that three bet size was psycho.
I didn't pay attention to that, if it was oversized, I like folding.
It was ten.
Uh, yeah, definitely folding at shorter stacks, but I don't know, dude, these, these middling pairs are too juicy. At deep, deep stacks, especially when he's kinda going crazy.
When you know that you're gonna, you know, run up the, like, second nut boat, then that's good.
I said.
Oh, what's that? Oh, yeah, ten six. Um, Pete, you here?
Uh, yeah, I'm here.
Look at this one, Pete. Uh, where I put it? So it makes me think of the pocket queens that you folded. Think I showed you this one, um.
Yeah, you sent me that one.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, I called the flop once with the thing, but it's also like the one that I was in was a three bet pot with an ace high flop, so you get some overfolds, but. I get where you're coming from there.
Yeah. All right, you guys got a hand to share?
It was a three bet pot multi-way with an ace, so.
Yeah.
I just give up.
I got a blind versus blind hand as well.
Go ahead, grab the screen.
Um. So I just, all right, we'll just. Thought it was kinda interesting, I actually already looked at it. He checked.
Bet one, you get better kings to fold, you have a diamond.
Yeah, I think that's pretty, pretty good.
That's small.
I like betting one.
I bet with.
Small one, whatever.
Here's again how I do it, I always go with my hardcore, if I have the king and diamonds, I'm gonna bet, and I'm gonna check with this.
Wait, so that was this a, uh, was this a, uh, limp ISO hand by you, or was this a raise call?
No, he raised, I called.
Okay, and he checks.
He checks.
Yeah, okay.
I'm betting all my diamonds here. I mean, I think you wanna bet high diamonds more.
I don't know if you, I don't even know if you necessarily wanna bet this, I, uh, I think checking is, honestly, if it's a hand like that. I think checking maybe managing the pot may be a good option.
Eight percent.
Yeah, I can see that. Having three doors straight is kinda nice.
Okay. So you bet with the king of diamonds and you check without the king.
Oh, yeah, king of diamonds is like the nuts, I I would definitely, I could see betting the king of diamonds.
So, I mean, this bet's like twenty percent of the time, it's not a mistake, but it's much better to have the king, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So you check. He bets, you just call, you might be able to raise this, actually, if you had the king of diamonds, I bet you would raise this.
So our range has zero, zero, zero raises, the entire range.
Does it?
Nope.
I guess it's the fact that it's a, uh, it's a raise call pot, so his range is just gonna be littered with some of this stuff.
Well, with the ace and the queen on board, I don't like raising a king X hand anymore.
So, yeah, actually, it might, he bet flop, right?
Like, the, the, the better kings have interaction, uh, you don't get queen on the fold, you don't get ace hard to fold.
Yeah, you're really, you're targeting too strong of hands.
Oh, you wanna check, check. Ace of hearts, and he bets. Fifty-two. So, yeah, no raises. Um, actually, we start folding this. But not if you have a dime.
Easy call.
Yeah, I like calling.
Oh, oh.
We just have a trash hand now.
He checked.
And if he checks, like, I think you gotta bluff sometimes, do you, like, okay, you got the, you got a king. Which is like.
Straight blocker.
It's a straight blocker, but it's also like the best unpaired card in the deck.
Yep.
Um. I don't know, man, I kinda wanna bluff.
Kinda wanna check.
We, we get here with lots of worse stuff than this, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Check to take my showdown with King High.
I would also check.
Maybe I'm at a line, maybe.
How much you betting, Kaylin?
If I'm bluffing this, I'm probably going like eighty percent pot, pot or something like that.
Cause you're trying to get him off of a queen or a jack.
Yes, exactly, you're trying to get him to fold like a, a queen or a jack, essentially. Like. Something in that neighborhood.
Yep.
You're.
So I kinda thought along the lines of everyone else, I considered bluffing, but I'm like, man, I got decent, I got some showdown, probably not gonna win much, but. These are two good blocks, you block the flush and the straight. And apparently, you gotta go for it. I checked.
Is that what it wants? What size does it choose?
Uh, I think two hundred and fifty percent.
Yeah, okay, so like, we just, this is a good hand that you would be targeting here, like, that guy can never call if you give him like. Some gas right here, right?
Yeah.
So, that went, uh, bet, call. In hearts.
And I guess he's just super capped when he checks this river, like, he gives you one good street. And like, any of his value, I would imagine that's betting the turn is probably gonna be blasting this eight of hearts on the river, too, right? Like.
This is all in, I think. We're just all in, right?
Yeah, you're just all in, actually, you're just jamming. Yeah, you're just all in, actually, you're just jamming.
Lot, lot of risk for, for the marginal spot, I think. Ah?
It's not, it's not, it's not even about the risk in the, the marginal spot, it's, it's about what he's showing up here with, like, he's, he just doesn't have the nuts here. And, you know, we can, we can still kind of have the nuts here.
Yeah, I got where you're coming from, yeah.
So like, your value is gonna, like, what's your value gonna, wanna do here? Like, if you have, you know, king ten, you're not gonna. Give him like this. Little bed, or potized bed, you're probably gonna like try to box him in with a all in, right, Louis? Is that what you're doing?
I'm not.
Oh.
You're not, you're not jamming king ten here on the river?
Not often enough, I guess.
He's only basically calling with two pairs, and then like, he's got the king eight, the king blocker with the eight. Uh, ten eight, that's the blocker.
Yeah, I mean, he's gonna have like some, he's gonna have like some queen, king, maybe with the, the king of diamonds, that's gonna have to call sometimes.
No.
Maybe jack, jack king, jack ten, maybe?
He's only calling sixteen percent of his range, and most, and like, they're not, well, they're not calling uh, eight, six, eight, five.
Oh yeah, no, 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 no.
These diamonds.
Oh yeah, those are, those are, those are flushes.
Yeah. I just thought it was.
Doesn't show up on the river. Yeah.
How do you do, um?
Well, it meets all the criteria, right? Like. One, you show up here with lots of bluffs. Two, he shows up here with lots of bluff catchers. And three. Like, you've got the nuts and a super polar range still, so it's kind of like a recipe for bananas. You want to make some banana, banana pudding, that's how you make it.
I mean, even a, a small bet is the same, is actually higher EV. Which is interesting that it chose to jam most off, I don't know, this is, this is the percentages of jams, right? Is this EV, uh, this is EV.
Mm-hmm.
So the smaller bet is making more. Than a large bet, but yet it's choo- choosing a large bet.
You're just not appropriately polarizing your range if you're taking a bunch of small bets here, I think.
Alright, what's a good thing I didn't go for, because I would have probably gone somewhere around half pot, two thirds, and then I'm losing, because then he's just gonna call me way wider. And I'm gonna lose chips.
Yeah.
So if you're choosing the right bluff size, you're losing money, right?
I agree with that logic. Which I kind of fall suspect of too, right? Because I would have gone close to pot here. And that seems to be suboptimal from small betting. It's like, if you're gonna go that size, why not just go for it?
So he's defending uh, twenty-eight percent instead of sixteen percent when we go pot.
Yeah, the, personally, then I would like more like the one, one fifty pot sized bet, not the other. So we can have a lot of, yeah, maybe some bluffs in the range. I don't, I don't get the, to uh, jam for a pot with the, with the bluff, I don't, I don't, uh, I, I can't take those pots.
But you can, Roger.
I add, theory I can, but you, you get what I mean.
Yeah.
That's pad poker.
It's, it's, yeah, it's not, maybe I should go. For export then.
Uh, I got one more, if no one else has one.
You have?
Yeah, go ahead. It's another blind versus blind, kind of simple. But the river I thought was a little interesting. Uh, well, I mean, I made a mistake, so it was interesting to me. It's this hand here, three player up. Uh, so. We're kind of deep here. I'm forty. Uh, this was a limp pot. Check.
Yeah, I think this is a good theory check, you have the range advantage, which means really trashy boards favor the big blind, right?
Well, limp pot, so I don't really understand, um, I have struggled to know who has what.
It's the opposite, I mean, yeah, like you raise more big cards. Um, he, yeah, he's here with every, you know, offsuit dudes, he's here with all this trash.
So he's got one hundred percent of his range.
Exactly. Everything except they didn't raise.
So of range.
I think if you call bullshit on this, you could check raise it, you have three to a straight, three to a flush. And like, no showdown value over card.
I called. Okay.
It's okay, I don't mind it.
And it goes check, check. So this was that spot that I wasn't sure.
I would check.
I think it's a, I think it's a theory value bet, and maybe in practice, people don't call you enough, but I do think it's supposed to be.
So, yeah, I, it's a value bet in my mind as well, what size?
Halfish. Two thirds, half, somewhere in that range.
That's what I thought. I thought half.
Did you solve this?
I like, I like betting three to four and folding to further aggression.
Oh yeah, yeah, they're never bluffing, they're just never bluff.
So it likes. Uh, so I saw that, but I, I, and I ran it twice, and I put in twenty-five, fifty. A hundred, a hundred and fifty, I think, on the river, which I usually put in. But the solver ran, I ran it twice, and it didn't have those bet sizes in there, and I double checked, triple checked, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure out why the fuck it didn't have the bet sizes I put in. So it kind of chose its own. And it liked, um. I used half. We were thinking along the same lines. And, but it preferred pot. It had some sixty, it had some sixty fives, I think it used. Some. So it just likes a little, little bit bigger than this, but it liked pot the most, I thought was interesting. And the cutoff was like, if you had a pair plus a flush, you used a small bet. With like this kind of stuff, with your middling high uh, flushes. But if you had no pair with a flush. The cutoff, you went for like pot value with, um, I think it was sevens plus. And sixes, if you had like a six of hearts, it went small. Which was like so random to me. Uh, we did get value, though. But just wanted to go better, I, I didn't think I got to go pot. That, this low on my range.
Yeah, with a nine of hearts, maybe the deal is partially that, um, he's supposed to be betting a lot of his higher hearts on the turns, like, if he doesn't bet the turn, he doesn't have king of hearts, he doesn't have jack of hearts that often, he doesn't have ten of hearts that often.
Right.
You also said it's a limp check pot, though, right? Like. It's, it's different, like this idea of too far up in your range, when you're playing against a hundred percent of cards available in the deck, and you have like a middling flush. I think uh, it's not like he chose to Vip this, I think you kind of can expand your value range quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair, and he chose not to bluff turn again, like, so many of us flushes need to bet turn.
Yeah.
So many of his single high hearts need to bluff turn.
Alright, he's playing this like he has marginal made or like complete airball that he just wants to play the next hand.
Alright, I'm gonna invite you guys to move to the Discord.
Party on, Garth.
Alright, see you guys soon.
Have a good one. Thank you.